Vision and mission. Vision, engaging, educating, empowering everyone every day. And the mission, Bloomingdale's School District, the nation's largest school for learning and education in the life field, and how we want to do this with our future and bring everyone to it. And we will go to our students of the month. And we have a message for the month. I don't need a microphone, do I? Can you be loud? So my student of the month here is Jason Campbell. He is a third grader from Miss Parsons' class, he's right back here. And his mom and dad, or Chad and Brittany, they're back here with you too, right? Which one do you like more? Brittany? So, he has, he's got, oh, his favorite, his favorite? Do you remember him? Just a second. And his favorite subject he still with? Uh, boy, right here. Um, favorite hobby? Playing basketball. I like doing this because he told all the dancers. So I want to see if he actually remembers what he told. So I would make sure that they do it again. Favorite food? Deep food. Deep food. That's good. What's your favorite seafood? Shrimp. Favorite color? Blue. Favorite movie or TV show? He doesn't have one. I thought for sure you had one now. All right. He doesn't have one. You want to hear what your teacher has to say about it? Are you sure? Here, play it. All right. Are you willing to hear it, anyone? All right. He says, "Mr. Casey Campbell is all that one can say about not paying Mr. Campbell a friend. Casey is great with academic and integrity." Uh, and grades. No, sorry, academics with technicals and grades. "He is trustworthy, organized, and takes pride in his work." "Casey is patient, drives the team." "He displays confidence and good common sense in and out of the classroom." "Casey is an asset to our classroom family, is a gift and a true blessing to help the class." There's a side note. Uh-oh. He said, uh-oh. "This one pulls at my heartstrings." "Casey is wise beyond his age." "He gives everyone in our family a run for their money and is always quick with one laugh." Answers the question. Casey Campbell, everyone. Getting the last scan. So I have two students of the month for April. Six for me and Steiner. And Six for you, unfortunately, is not native here. I can speak, but I do have my Steiner. Taylor Neil, one of them. Good. You'll take hands for all these people. So, I think it's over. Two years ago. So I have Taylor answered the questions for me. Uh, for them. And we have here. Her favorite food is deep white. I can go with that. That's the second favorite right there. She is involved in FFA and R Club. Your favorite subject is biology. She says, "Because everything that I enjoy about learning about and love all in one step, I love learning about animals, body works, ecosystems, and more." Okay. Go on down here. Her hobbies? She enjoys painting, drawing, reading. Like this one, ice skating. Pretty ice skater. Boating? Yeah. Um, hanging out with friends, eating good food, which includes chicken. And taking care of animals. What animals do you have to take care of? Wow. There you go. Yeah, it's all right. Why not? Uh, last question, uh, I asked Taylor a lot about Bloomingdale's High School. And, uh, Taylor has been here four, and then she came back to us this year, and she's been a great addition. Really, really glad that she made the choice to come back. She says, "Everybody in Bloomingdale's School is really helpful. They actually care about your education. They don't just let you struggle, and instead they provide opportunities so that you can do better and succeed. You can actually talk to your teachers, and they care about what you practice." That is powerful words there. Miss Neil, congratulations. Taylor, you're welcome.
And we have to congratulate the students and the parents, uh, family. Uh, we might not take a rest in the meeting, but if you please, and stand, and we'll talk to you in a second. And we can get going with the room, but I'll let you read the questions. Here, come out if you'd like.
All right. So a few recognition here that I have. Um, we had, we always have our local one day where we have people come in, they greet our kids as they come into the building. So I like to recognize those groups. Our Riley Dance Marathon group of Miss Medina came in on Wednesday. Craft and Sacks Club came in with Miss Burton and the Girls Tennis Team led by Mrs. Ross. Support our students on those Wednesdays. I know it's very much appreciated by everyone. Kids absolutely love it. They love coming into Bloomingdale's. But I, you know, give credit to Ms. Kim Hill. She came up with our housework, and she loved the show and did a great job. Good. Speaking of Mrs. Hill, I also want to recognize her because this week in our testing, anybody who's done Ireland testing knows that they're doing tasks. It goes two weeks long, uh, testing every day, and she basically says it all, runs it, checks off. Uh, out there it helps, but it's eighty percent or twenty percent. So I want to recognize her for that as well. Uh, Mr. Whitmer had a Mark Madsen bracket challenge, and didn't win it this year, but that's a fourth grade. Uh, two wooden brackets challenge there, so I want to recognize her. Uh, also, uh, Ms. Laura Helms, our, uh, music teacher held the spring concert. Uh, so second, fourth grade students, both have a great job. I appreciate the parents coming out, supporting that. I want to recognize not just Ms. Helms, but all the students, they're having a lot of fun. You could tell that, so that's important. Our also got NJ RTC that's blowing Luthway. I want to recognize her. She used to come out, we have a CCLC program at Bloomingdale's. This, she has come out and reviewed this three or four times, and he has led it to awesome. So I don't know exactly what part, what wasn't there, but it had some. She did love that. So, um, Mrs. Page wanted to be recognized her in this thing that she was a particular. She didn't just come watch it seven times. So we really appreciate her for doing that. Uh, Mrs. Patterson runs the Super Library Patriot Program, and basically she gives awards for students that follow the rules, uh, turn those back in on time, and take care of those. And so our winners, since the last time we met now are Hope Marling, Dane Patterson, Jacob Loving, Hudson Vogel, Avery Faulk, Audrey Hill, Joanna Johnson, Evan Knightley, and Candice Green, who love them, so we really appreciate that. Program is one of the efforts, and responsive, positive impact, positive reinforcement works. This was all Mrs. Patterson's idea, and she's been on top of it. She's responded a lot. And then finally, uh, we always have our Character Trade drawn every Friday. Students get a Character Trade, they turn it in the office, they have it drawn Saturday Friday. So our last four winners, two of them were from the Character Trade of Responsibility, one for Self-Discipline, and one for Spiddage. And our winners are Ella Helping, Grace Blowing, Maisie James, and the Football. So I got for you. Thank you. Okay. Well, uh, let's see, for Bloomingdale's High School, we had, uh, three teachers. We had five spots, but we decided for a new initiative that is a partnership with Purdue University and Indiana University. It's called Scale K-12. And this is a focus on the microelectronics industry that has been coming to Westgate and the Department of Defense. Uh, teachers will be creating curriculum in their field of study that is related to the microelectronics, uh, uh, business, and, and will build background knowledge and experience in the microelectronics. So that we're gearing up for the, the new, uh, additions to Westgate there for microelectronics. And for our three teachers to be a part of that, we are in Code War Two, uh, Code War One. There's two parts that are locked in and that are starting again. So basically, it was, uh, not basically was, it was the chat for what, new tools, what happened. And Holy Trinity was the chat for that in Code War One. Bloomingdale's is the school in Code War Two, uh, I believe, but Tiptonute County School, Central, and, uh, Lafayette are the northern part of it. So our teachers are going to be working simultaneously with the teachers from all those other districts that I've written, uh, and willing, uh, they're pretty familiar with that. And it's not just for them, this will be shared throughout, uh, in the area of that. So we're really excited about that. Also, the Bloomingdale's Roxy Academic Team, which was led by our own cadet Dominic May. Uh, they participated in the National Academic Exam. Cadets Nick Pittman, Katie Barker, Joe Von Graves, uh, Alana Raper, as I said, led by Dominic May placed two hundred and seventeen, which is the top fourteen percent of the nation among fifteen hundred and forty teams in the National Academic Exam. Uh, we also placed sixteenth of sixty-seven teams in our region, uh, multiple teams from schools, and sixth of nineteen schools, uh, in our region participated. Uh, Roxy, right now, currently, they're on their spring trip. They headed to South, uh, Tennessee State Center. They'll be down there, uh, in groups and, uh, visiting that, uh, to give more information when they have that. Uh, I also want to recognize our Riley Dance Marathon. Uh, actually, our FTK, or the Kids Student Group, which put on the Riley Dance Marathon. They raised an astounding amount, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents to the past weekend. Of course, it's been going on before that, but they had their dance marathon this past Saturday from one to, uh, midnight. So I want to congratulate the FTK, FTK student group, uh, Miss Medina, for leading that, uh, their hard work and exceptional fundraising efforts for Bloomingdale's Hospital. An astounding amount of money, and really proud of it. Uh, our FCCLA student group participated in the Walk a Mile in Their Shoes, uh, which is a, uh, initiative to support survivors of technical assault, and that was at Courthouse on April twelfth. So they participated in that. Uh, this past Tuesday, they bested it with all our juniors, uh, and it does a free service for our students, not the students across Indiana. Uh, and they came in and met with them to talk about scholarships financially and the BASSing. So, uh, they will actually be back at the beginning, next school year, talk to our juniors who will be seniors. Then we will have a free BASS of filing, uh, meeting or, or opportunity for parents to come in and, uh, with their students to fill out the BASS, which is very important and very helpful. Uh, want to recognize our own Blake Neal. Blake was selected to participate in the Future All-Star Game at Hamilton Southeastern on June third, uh, and he has also been selected to be, uh, in the Tujer Top One Hundred, the Top One Hundred High School Basketball Players in the State of Indiana, which is due on June twenty-sixth. So we congratulate Blake for that. And, uh, finally, our Spring Conference was this past Sunday. Ms. Helm led our Center's Asian Cardinals Ball that, uh, taking remarks out there at the Glover Gym on Sunday. Thank you. Hi, thank you.
Okay. Uh, during our recent table, uh, we learned that not all never lose, we're aware of the Department's side of this table. Uh, we have since our biggest call on announced prior to the public conference. If you would like to speak in and not all were done so, please not at this time. Last month, I was reminded of the public comments during COVID. While I was at work with this very heated meeting, our community members expressed their voting views in a very respectful manner. Because of these high expectations, we had not prepared ourselves to react to community members who chose to do otherwise. For this, I apologize. Due to this incident, we must be better prepared in the future. At this time, I'd like to share a portion of the public, which is based policy. The policy can also be bad, also with that. Midcare and orderly public credit, or provide a period of public participation at every regular meetings, and those public meetings are during which acts that may be taken by public speakers together, so they can. Um, officer of each court will have been publicly stated, now and ever to the speakers of the law. The presiding officer should be guided by following. Public participations shall be committed as indicated on order before the court takes action. Nothing has expressed public knowledge. Intended by freshman or senior participants, probably for this, upon a lawful. The participants must be recognized and provided, and will be requested in presence for comments by a noun, other name, address, or affiliation, or within and where appropriate. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to a certain duration. The public comment next to the topic is thirty minutes old. No participation, no, need more than one, thanks possibly. All statements shall be directed and provided off. No person may add or ask or request a court member's opinion. The presiding officer may, or given public comments, which are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. Providing officer may interrupt or, or accompany a person's statement, but the statement too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Perpetually, the presiding officer may request an evidence that a person behaves in a manner that is reckless, or the orderly conduct of the teacher. The officer may request assistance, or force the officer to, or disown a person, and that person's conduct interferes with the orderly process. The presiding officer may, however, reach the head manager at the time by a public account, to access the orderly content of the media after the court is settled. And the presiding officer may, in ways, or when necessary, to protect the privacy of the word of instruction. I haven't signed it. Thank you. We should have, they think it's by here, uh, and I'm out of work. Way we're drawn, uh, for, uh, for help. Thank you. And the first one. It is Starlet Jett.
Okay. As you said, my name is Starlet Jett, and I'll try not to cry at this, and I think you all in the world know why. First of all, I'm a taxpayer in this school district. I'm also a mother and a grandmother. Both of my daughters are Bloomingdale's High School graduates, and I have three grandmothers in this school system as of today. I don't know if they will be in the future. My concerns tonight as a taxpayer is how the school board members failed a school employee at the last board meeting. That employee is a current high school math teacher and a former varsity volleyball coach for six seasons, and that is my daughter, Deanna Potts. On March the twenty-four, twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-four, the school board allowed a parent and a current student to speak. What they spoke was very damaging accusations towards her as a coach, which carries over as a teacher. Most people said it didn't, but it does. In fact, what they accused her of, in my opinion, is exactly what they did in the school board meeting, which was bullying. By humiliating her at the school board meeting and on social media, which is still continuing on social media. Not a single school board member or administrator stepped up and stopped it. In my opinion, what I witnessed that night was a modern-day lynchery. Okay? And if you don't know what that is, look it up. As a result or lack of your actions, Deanna's name, reputation, finances, emotions, and her self-worth have been damaged, along with her children, who no longer wants to attend this school. She is also a public teacher for this Bloomingdale's School District, and I feel pretty well liked and highly regarded here. The nomination to have her contract renewed as the Bloomingdale's High School varsity volleyball coach, I feel was tainted by the words that were spoken that night. The vote reener her contract was four to three. The four board members who voted against him had the backing of our superintendent, our high school principal, and our athletic director. I, were based on emotions, some of you were personal agenda, and not facts. In the six seasons.
Good evening. My name is Maisie Gillan, and I'm a current teacher at Bloomingdale's Middle and High School. I came to speak tonight on behalf of my coworker, friend, former coach, and former teacher, Mrs. Deanna Potts. I first met Mrs. Potts in the spring of two thousand and sixteen, when she was hired as my freshman geometry teacher. Throughout my time in high school, Mrs. Potts never failed to advocate for me and her other students. For me specifically, I struggled immensely in math. On multiple occasions, she went above and beyond for me. She would tutor me before school and after school hours, using her own personal time. She also went out of her way to set up tutoring opportunities for me with my chemistry teacher when she saw I was struggling in that subject as well. When I eventually moved out of her class and up to trigonometry calculus, she never once turned me down for help and offered it before I even asked. She teaches with a passion for her subject area and shows nothing but care for her students. Up until my senior year of high school, I had been on the volleyball, I had been the volleyball team manager under multiple coaches. When Mrs. Potts accepted the varsity volleyball coaching job in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, I was thrilled to have one of my favorite teachers coaching our team. Mrs. Potts coaches with a passion and heart, much like her teaching. Mrs. Potts didn't stop at caring for her students in the classroom and on the volleyball court. I struggled with my mental health in high school, and my low points, Mrs. Potts was the person I looked to for comfort and reassurance. She never turned me away in my time of need. She was a shoulder to cry on. After I graduated high school, Mrs. Potts and I kept in touch to check on me often and ask me about my college classes. How special is it that we have teachers at Bloomingdale's that care so much? Today, Mrs. Potts and I are coworkers and hallway neighbors. As her coworker, I know I can count on her to give me good advice and give me helpful teaching strategies to use in the classroom. To this day, I think back to all that Mrs. Potts has done for me, because I would neither be the teacher nor the woman I am today without her constant guidance, care, and love she has shown me over the years. I am saddened and heartbroken by the way Mrs. Potts has been portrayed to the school and up in the community. Her character integrity has been questioned. From my perspective, as Mrs. Potts coworker, friend, former player, and former student, that isn't her. She deserved better than this.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Wise, as you said, I'm the mom of a twenty-three Bloomingdale's grad and current sophomore, been coach for about a decade here at Bloomingdale's, and also a prior board member. I wish to address the board tonight in regards to the non-real J.D. Neal varsity basketball coaching position. I contacted the board on this initially by email several weeks ago, and very much appreciate the board members that took the time to respond and speak to me on this topic. I wish for my message to be clear, and one focused on learning lessons where seemingly processes were not followed, and there's clear room for improvement. That starts with the fact that two board members did not respond in any way to my email, including the representative from my own township. You all were elected to serve the community. Ignoring questions and our concerns from the community is very disappointing and a blatant disregard to the duty set forward by the position that you elected to serve in. Do better. With my prior board experience, I do have some unique awarenesses to the logistics of how executive public sessions are supposed to work, including all the research and preparations required when dealing with contentious topics such as that as contractor nulls. Through my conversations with the various board members, it was confirmed that in the case of non-contractor nulls for J.D. Neal, the decision was made against the recommendation of the principal and superintendent to renew, ignoring the successful completion of any performance standards that were set in place, and instead was made on allegations that were not vetted with the coach nor with other individuals involved. I have it in writing from the board that they do not investigate, that means to say, no proper sampling of athletes, parents, assistant coaches, etc., which then very obviously implies that the board purely goes off the word of a few individuals without proper vetting. If that is the case, and due diligence is not being done, I do not understand why there is board. Additionally, it does not appear that Bloomingdale's has in place or is following anything formal related to performance standards and evaluations. This does nothing other than cause an environment where folks are not on the same page, and in my humble opinion, leaves the school completely vulnerable to future-related legal action. I recommend that if no formal policies or procedures are currently in place and are being followed, that this be corrected ASAP to ensure proper transparency and accountability for all going forward. Do better. I'd also like the opportunity to address rumblings I've heard in my board discussions related to player mental health conditions. There's a big game of telephone that's been going on here with zero backfinding. In addition, and is what is most concerning, is that the board has had a complete disregard to the mental health impacts their actions would have on the current players, parents, coaching staff, school, administrators, not to mention J.D.'s family throughout this whole process. You were so quick to speak and to try to convince others of your viewpoints, that you forgot to listen, learn, and be empathetic to the concerns of the affected individuals that were dealing with major stresses that resulted from your decision. Unacceptable. Do better. In closing, I'd like to state that, that your actions have divided a community over a topic that is a major part of what makes Bloomingdale's great, Bloomingdale's Cardinals Basketball. Such a wonderful togetherness. This sport is historically brought to our great little town. The board owes it to the community to publicly discuss your planned, actionable steps to the toxic environment that is alive and well now in the Bloomingdale's School District that will allow the community to start to heal and move forward. Thank you for your time.
I just hope I have a few items. Repeat myself for the brand name. It's a game of football, a school board member, nineteen ninety to ninety-eight, so I don't want to slight say it, but I'm a ninety-two. My father was a boys' basketball coach here in Indiana. I played for my dad. I heard some of the same comments that I'm sure you folks have heard from a select few here in the community, a select few of community experts. I'll put that in quotes. Mr. Neal, five-year record of eighty-seven to forty-four, three sectional titles, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, IBC, A Coach of the Year. One of the three here in the state of Indiana. I'll repeat that. One of the three here in the state of Indiana. Team had the twenty-four to four record, and then you folks followed up by giving Mr. Neal an improvement plan with board concerns, which as far as I've heard, was completed. This past year, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-fourteen, uh, if you hadn't talked to anybody in town, would have said that might win four or five ballgames. They ended up winning 13 and lost four or five by just one, two, three points. In my opinion, this is probably Mr. Neal's best coaching job here at Bloomfield. Bloomfield's known for boys' basketball across Southern Indiana. Part of the reason is coaching continuity. Bloomfield had three coaches from, I believe it's 1954 to 2009, Guy Glover, Steve Redd, Ron McRide. Mr. Neal's the fourth coach in the last 14 or 15 years. Coach is leaving for different reasons. We won't get into those. But you're attempting, or have attempted, or have linked to this discontinuity by not extending Mr. Neal's contract. At the high school level, everybody gets a, everybody gets a trophy, scenario's over. You earn a spot on the team and you earn playing time on the team. Coach may use corrective criticism to push his players to work harder, to get better. And that's exactly what the team this year did. From day one to the end, they got better. And I'll conclude with a comment made by Dan Early, coach of the 2024 NCAA men's basketball champion Connecticut Huskies. We spend a lot of time on the parents. Are they going to be fans of their son or be parents? Are they going to hold them accountable? Have an expectation that if something goes wrong, that it's not the coach's fault? Their son has to work harder, do more, earn his role on the team. The role of a parent makes a difference in building a team culture. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. I'd first like to start by saying two quotes from two very influential people in society and to myself and I know to my teammates. The first one's a little older than the second one. The first one is our 16th president Abraham Lincoln, who said, "United we stand and divided we fall." Members of the school board, I think we need to recognize this quote. Our team once stood united, but now look at us now. Look at the ramifications. Now I'd like to move on to the second quote, which comes from a respectful individual to many a hero, an individual who has been filled with my life very dearly, my coach, Coach Neal. These has placed the coach in a basketball gym on the bleachers. Bleachers require zero effort, zero after-school practices, zero hill sprints, zero middle-of-the-day-and-June workouts, and zero before-school-in-the-morning lifts slash practices. We play for the only, we play only for the name on the front of our chest, and that is hot by our coach. For you, it is easy, but for us, it is hard. That's what coach tells us. What we do is hard. Though I miss my fair share of before-school practices, every day after school, I was there. Where were you? The fact of being there is not what is at hand, but it was who was there could have clarified the dissenting information and represent our coach. It went against the principal's approval, a superintendent's recommendation, and now all of us. Dr. Van Der Aa in a meeting with three board members a couple Fridays ago asked, "Did you have enough information to make this decision?" They all answered yes, but now we've realized that some of the information provided to the board was wrong, false, not true. I was there and I worked, and nothing that people have told me about Coach Neal has been true. In the words of Buck Owens, "How many of you have sit and judged me and have walked the streets of Bakersfield, Bloomfield School Board? How many of you who sit there and judge Coach Neal have validated this false information? And how many of you have thought of the ramifications and hurt and hurt this will do to our community? I don't think you have. Afterwards, the second, for those of you who don't know, that's the sectional championship that we sadly lost. We tried our hardest to keep our heads held high because we knew that we could do it again. We could be right here in the locker room, but hopefully next time, on the winning side. Coach says, "We don't hope, but we know." In terms of winning, coach says, "We do not hope, but we know." And this knowing has faded the hope, and this hope has now been destroyed. You do a great disservice to the community if you do not get my coach and our coach back. Thank you.
First, I can say that I stand with what Coach Neal has done in his program and the team. I have always believed in his coaching abilities ever since I stepped on the floor when he started coaching me, and that was at the end of my eighth grade year. And even then, I was standing on practices and always there for the games, my eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade. There's nothing that I've seen in practice or games that would change that. I think the decision of not renewing Coach Neal's contract was a huge mistake. I think that being on the school board involves doing what's best for the community and doing what you think would help make it better. I think you did the complete opposite in this situation. I think your decision has caused more hurt in this community than good. I also think that it was wrong that no one on the school would reach out to any one of the players besides one person. When that one person did reach out to the player, the player did not respond to the text from the school board member. This school member seemed like they gave up. And it wasn't only her, but it seemed like all of you gave up. None of you guys contacted anybody. I would also, I would love to get a text message or call asking to discuss about Coach Neal's matters along this decision. Me personally, I think you did not gather enough information before making the final decision. I also think that it's childish that you guys are hiding behind the fact of stuff being confidential as do other players, and we deserve to know. In conclusion, I think this decision has made a huge split in the community, in the community, and this was a mistake. Now that you've heard it, myself and my fellow teammates, we respectfully ask for you to revoke on this contract with our coach. Thank you.
Danny Lent, proud father of a young man in Bloomfield. I'm also a graduate of this school. I've held a lot of pride in this school over the years. I have a lot of questions regarding this though. Number one, was there any documentation, at all, to the phone calls, to the complaints about Coach Neal? Did any one of you document any calls, any of the responses? Was there any documentation of you as a school board having Dr. Van Der Aa, Principal Dean, talk to Coach Neal? Hey, we're getting these complaints. What is going on? Close two sides favor go or your friends. You checked one side. Your job is to check both. You should have. You should have got both, the superintendent, the principal. You may get the coach now. We need to find out what's going on. Do these accusations hold merit? You did not do that. You failed that of your job. You were elected by us to do that. You didn't. He should have been in part of this stuff. He has a chance to defend himself. Every law, each person on trial, court, has a chance to defend himself. The man has not been given a chance. That is pathetic. I heard you all to revoke. I've been told, "Oh, we can't. If we do that, we'll set a precedent. So everybody will automatically, I always want to rebuttal." No, you're resolute. You admit you're wrong and you corrected. When you think, "No, we don't need to do it," you did. You've lost a such a stand. And with such a, I re-vote that. Teacher, administrator, I have to watch everything I do. I have to watch everything I say. Oh my gosh, did I hurt their feelings? Am I going to lose my job now? I have to coddle Pat on them. They're there to instruct these kids. However, they see that. I sometimes wonder, "Mr. Neal, standing in the bleachers, drowning my jeep." I'm a, sorry. But I get paid to run heavy equipment and blow up the road. He gets paid to coach his team. That's his job. I will tell boss, "Well, he isn't that well employee. We don't have to do this." Yes, you do. The man draws a check from this school, from this job, then he is an employee. He should have been contacted. He should have been informed. You did not. Thank you.
So obviously, I already know my name. My name's Matt Patterson. I'm the father of a player on Coach Neal's team. There's been a lot of what I was already going to say been said tonight. And I, I can't say how much I believe in that. But the thing that I want to ask you is how do you look at a group of boys? This would be the second time that I've spoke to some of you. Three of you met with them a couple weeks ago. They asked for a meeting with the rest, which didn't get facilitated on their request. How do you look at a team? Like Tucker said, they're here early mornings, they're here late nights, playing for Bloomfield. They're playing for their friends, their coach, the community. I don't know how, as adults, if you had a heart inside your chest or any world, you can't say that the majority is not here because 13 of them was in your office in a meeting who met with three of you. Ask them to meet with the other ones. That is the team. That is the current team. That is the majority. I would challenge you to tell me when the last time you've seen this many people at a board meeting. I bet it's been a minute. That standing ovations for this team and this coach, that don't happen very often. So I challenge you right now, right is right, wrong is wrong. And like Danny Lent said, I know that you can make a motion and you can make a revoke. Me, do it for them. This is supposed to be about the children, the players, and this school. Everybody who's employed here is supposed to have their best interest at heart. That is the majority of the team. You were voted in by the majority of this community. This is the biggest school board meeting I've had that you could tell me that you've had in a long time. Right is right, wrong is wrong. Admit when you're wrong and do what is right. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Harvey. I'm a parent of an elementary student, wide hope of varsity baseball coach, and a Bloomfield graduate. I'm speaking tonight in support of Coach Neal, the basketball team, the Neal family, our school personnel, and our community. I feel that the decision at your last meeting to not renew the coaching contract for Coach Neal was professionally and ethically wrong. Professionally, I feel that this decision was based off of complaints and perceptions, not facts. As a professional in an administration role, you should be following leadership policies and procedures. Did you have frequent follow-up meetings with Coach Neal based off the improvement letter he was given for the 2023-2024 season? Did you notify him of the standards of behavior they could feel he violated? Did you provide him with performance coaching and set goals with him if you felt he violated standards? Did you meet face-to-face with him and deliver performance notices in the form of warnings and write-ups? I believe that the answer to all of my questions is no. From a professional level, I believe that would justify you wanting to revoke. If you revoke and prove that you are leaders and professionals, that will have a significant impact on the trust our community has in you. Ethically, I feel this decision was wrong on so many levels. I believe that you based your vote off of the negative feelings and emotions of people that have vendettas and agendas. The week following your vote, a family member of a complainer was seen in a public place clapping their hands stating, "We did it. We got him fired." There's also proof that a board member's spouse sent a text message to players from last year's team that stated, "Hearing the news of J.D.'s firing makes me happy. Sorry it didn't come sooner for you guys. Hope college or whatever you're doing is going well." I feel that this is so wrong. In my opinion, there should have to be a revoke with this board member removing themselves from the vote. They were obviously negatively swayed by their spouse's agenda. If you don't prove your professionalism and morals, you're going to lose the trust of so many people. If teachers don't trust their administration, they will leave. If they would stay, they will not be engaged. They will feel they are not supported by their administration. If we have disengaged teachers teaching our students, they will not be getting the education that they need and that they deserve. If coaches don't feel supported and trust their leaders, we won't have quality coaches. Coaching and sports are all about winning games. These coaches are teaching students life skills such as time management, responsibility, how to overcome being defeated, and respect. If we don't have coaches, then our athletes will not get the experience they need and deserve. If students don't feel they can trust their leaders and administrators, their education will suffer. If students aren't supported and engaged, they will not get the education they need and deserve. Our school will lose students due to choice or academic fallouts. If our community doesn't feel that you have our students' best interest at heart, the community won't be engaged. This is going to affect sponsors, donations, fundraisers, and enrollment numbers. For Coach Neal, this team, this family, this school, and this community, make this right. Revoke and let Coach Neal keep his job. Let this team, still before he can keep the coach. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Laura Dent, and I'm a college player from way back in the past with Coach Neal. I played on the Eastern Ring girls basketball team for three years under Coach Neal. And I look back on those times of my teenage, and I'm still like family would today. And all of the things that he taught me and how that's carried me through the short resume that I'm about to read to you through teaching us just how to face adversity, how to be empowered, which is something I've heard repeatedly throughout your school's mission statement. So as a young woman, he had such a great impact. So here's what I have to say. I'm going to read my notes so I don't continue to ramble. In 2006, I graduated from Eastern Ring where I have the privilege of playing on the girls' basketball team, led by Coach Neal for three seasons. I then went on to earn my teaching degree following graduation, which I must know I was the first person in my family to receive my college education, which I think is important because when I went to college, you feel like a mess for a little bit, but people like Coach Neal, those core people in your life, ringing words of encouragement, empowerment. "We can do this. We face adversity. We don't step down. We go after it." Was one of the few lessons that he taught me. I can tell you many accomplishments that I have. I'm a female business owner. All things that spur from not, not backing down, constant encouragement, constant integrity, tenacity, and going after your goal in life. I think what bothered me the most when I heard about your vote was that you're robbing these individuals of the lightest lessons that myself and my teammates all learned years ago. that myself and my teammates all lived years ago, learned from Coach. He was empowering, he empowered young women to do more, to be more, to stand up and go conquer the world. Anything we set our mind to, he had our back. One of the issues that I've heard, you know, that was brought to attention and people have addressed is physical health. And I'm calling it a tear up when I talk about this, because it's just so far from the truth of who he is. As a young girl, I was also a student candidate. There was another teacher in the building that actually did harass young girls about what they ate. And she would boo at me every time I would cross the gym to go to the vending machine. And you know what? One day, Coach heard it and he said, "No, we're not doing this, you're not going to talk to her that way." So it was so hard for me to believe that he has changed so much over the course of time, that he would still protect his team with the fierceness that he protected us. We were a family, he had our back. They are a family, they have his back. He brings out the best in people. Another note I want to say is, I want my children around him, I want my children, they're sitting along the wall right there, to experience his programming. I live in Wilmington, Indiana. I drove forty-five minutes to camp last year so that my son, Abe, could come to camp and experience a little bit of what Bloomfield's program has to offer. And in my opinion, is what Bloomfield's program has to offer. So I hope that you will consider a revote from an old-time player, a female player, and a woman that firsthand had him stand up for her, and he probably didn't remember it, but stand up for her and give her the strength to say, "No, you will not abuse me that way." Thank you.
Good evening. Great, I'm here on Bloomfield's construction for new head first team basketball coach, Dave Neal. After achieving season two, the Bloomfield School Board blindsided the community with the news that Coach Neal, the 2023 District Coach of the Year, would not be back as the coach and leader of this program next season. An improvement plan put into place due to complaints from disgruntled parents for the 23-24 season was administered by Coach Neal's direct supervisors, who then provided you, the board, with a recommendation to renew Coach Neal's contract for the 23-25 season. This leads me to my first set of questions. Why did you decide to go against the recommendation of those who work with Coach Neal on a daily basis? Why did you not trust the judgment of the leaders of this school district? And now, how can those supervisors that you went against trust you moving forward? You continuously give concerned parents, community members, and most importantly, over seventy-five percent over there of the current players the runaround, not answering questions stating it's a personnel issue. You dismiss the feelings of over seventy-five percent of the players who care deeply enough about their coach to get up the courage to meet with you. The same kids you are here to serve and listen to. These players know Coach Neal better than anyone. They are with him at all practices, all games, all locker room talks, all best practice. And you presume to know more about this man as a coach than these boys? Again, over seventy-five percent of the players came to you in support of their coach. Instead, you chose to listen to complaints made by you, not by the rest. This leads me to my next set of questions. If complaints were truly made, how were they made? Were they verbal complaints from one individual to another? Were the complaints properly documented? Were these complaints discussed with Coach Neal? Since apparently these complaints were extreme enough to lead to a coach being voted out, how were they investigated? Why was this issue not brought up for a discussion to all involved parties instead of a rash decision made behind closed doors? As a result, your decision has divided this team as well as the community. You had no plan for moving forward and now have left players searching for answers. Participation in spring workouts have slowly diminished over the past four weeks due to our sense not knowing the status of who their next coach will be if they even decide to play. We want a board that is responsive and thoughtful, that we can trust and respect. The bottom line is, this decision is unethical and wrong. If it weren't, you would not see this kind of response. If it weren't, you would not be having the mixed feelings you've had the last three weeks. You can't make this decision, this decision makes sense, because it doesn't. We demand a revote. Coach Neal and the players deserve a revote.
First of all, I'd like to tell you how sorry I am that the address that you gave is wrong. I'd like to make one specific point only. At least two board members have mentioned that some people who did not support Coach Neal in previous years are supporting him now. The board seems to cite this as some sort of a sign of deception or some kind of mystery they're interpreting in a negative way to support their votes of no on his coaching contract. There's no deception there, no mystery, no big conspiracy theory. It's straightforward, it's simple. Coach Neal earned the support of some people this year who may not have supported him previously. There's no more to read into it than that. Now that the game supporters this year, because they saw him commit himself to making improvements, made that improvement, and grew as a coach. Many have respect for a man willing to listen to critiques and take that input and become a better coach. He didn't quit on his team or this school. That deserves respect and earned support.
Hi, my name's Angie Pashin. I'm here as a first-grade teacher at Bloomfield Elementary for a long time. Can you hear me? A Bloomfield school graduate, major, major basketball fan, because I'm from Bloomfield, Indiana. My dad's in life here, it's here, and my mom is supportive. Our basketball partner tonight, he played for Guy Glover. So it's a major part of my life, something I'm passionate about. My son goes to school here, he's obsessed with basketball. And that is because we have raised him at the Guy Glover Gym, watching these guys over here and some that come and support him and watching and supporting JV Neal. I didn't have a lot of time to prepare because I was at the school all day until five, serving our school and our students, so I'll do the best I can. Much of what I hope the board will hear tonight has already been covered. There are a few additional points I'd like to make. It shares some issues of concern that I have. I have heard board members about the basketball coaching decision. And while Wendy, a few responded to me, one particular had responded and to my email, but when I asked to speak with that person in person or via phone call, whatever would be more convenient, I never received a response. I felt that as a teacher, my perspective was valuable, but it doesn't seem that my side mattered. It's frustrating that there was time made for disgruntled parents, but not time for a concerned teacher who's also a mom and a daughter. I feel this decision was unjustified and unethical in more ways than one, and not in the best interest of our school or students. Not just the players who have begged for their coach to stay, but all of the students, because they will likely lose athletic director or possibly his wife. An excellent, experienced, irreplaceable, I'm going to say that twice, irreplaceable first-grade teacher. Given this decision, we'd like to include something that has often impacted our school and community in a positive way. Were the widespread effects of this decision ever reconsidered? I ask you tonight to show our teachers, our students, and our community that you do care about the entire community. And now that you have finally heard both sides, please revote based on both sides and majority. Please do the right thing. Been out of the courtroom for a little while, so this gives me a lot of anxiety. So thank you for the time, but that's what you mean. I am a third-year alumni, I'm going to say that, so it's all about. And I've been involved in Marcy's sports for a second. We've also been athletic volunteers for twelve to fifteen years, donating all the time, a lot of money, time, I'm sure you've already seen the time you gave as well as the doors that I gave. We've been to schools, and it's upsetting. I'm embarrassed to warn the community, I'm embarrassed personally. I've asked school board members questions about recent coaching decisions and have gotten wishy-washy, untruthful, unresearched answers. And this is not acceptable. The majority of the kids and parents complaining are unhappy with playing time or their roles on the table. You would know that if you talked with the players, parents, or hang with them at the games because it's very obvious what is happening on the board. You've proved to me and other basketball parents, and all these boys over here, that you really don't care about them. It's sad, that's sad, it's upsetting. This has been heart wrenching to see with our school that I work so hard for, stick on to this. There are mental health issues, that's what we're claiming this is. But I, I think kids are using buzzwords for you. And maybe yes. And, and what you thought were fixing were mental health issues has created a whole bunch of them. And unfortunately, it is kids, it is families, and it is the kids. So most importantly, your primary role is to keep exceptional teachers and administration at our school. And I failed. You did not do the due diligence in making coaching decisions. And I urge you to take a step back, talk to the players, talk to the parents, other coaches, and you should rethink your decision. I'm not demanding a vote right now, but I think you should take another look at things. Thank you for your time.
I have to open my microphone here. I can decide if I want to talk or not, but I sent a letter to the school board. And I do something with my, my emails that I send. I send delivery receipts and read receipts. So I know you got it, and I know you're ready. I got two read receipts back, one from a board member and one from our superintendent. So I have no idea if anybody else on the board took the time to read my email or not. That's the way it seems to me. And I do this as a business person in the community. So I'm going to read my letter that I sent to you so I can make sure you guys hear. As previously being a school board member in a neighboring school district, I completely understand the difficult decisions, the struggles that come before the school board, and passion that comes along with them and parents and athletics. There is nothing more sacred to each and every parent than the well-being and happiness of their childhood years of schooling and academics and athletics. It seems higher with the most decisions that come with the non-renewal or removal of an athletic coach at any school is a squeaky wheel for the loudest compliance. Usually when, usually with some type of agenda is what wins out. This is truly unfortunate, and I believe this is the case for the non-renewal of Coach JV Nero's head varsity basketball coach. I think a lot of times we all forget that athletes are a competition and takes motivation, hard work, and a want-to in order to be successful. These can all be measured by different metrics, and I truly believe this is something a lot of parents and student athletes have lost over the years. In the age of things like class sports, everyone gets a trophy unless not keep score, we have started to create a generation of kids, even younger parents, that have lost their will to drive to succeed in life. We are creating people that feel entitled, one thing's given to them, cannot earn. We see this so many times that when a kid doesn't get their way, they don't get enough playing time or are put in an uncomfortable position, push them to be better, they either quit or they transfer because they think the grass is greener on the other side. More times than not, these individuals just miss out on the great opportunity to become a better person, saying they're not going to be successful adults once they enter the real world. I'll be first, I'll be the first to say that I don't know the full background of discussions that have taken place over the last couple of years regards to Coach Neal. But I have talked with enough people that I believe I have enough information to form an opinion on the map. It was my understanding that at the end of this twenty-three contract, the discussions had, there's renewal, and that there were some areas that the board would improve and change to make for the 2024 school year. It was obvious to me throughout the basketball season, Coach Neal made significant changes in the way he conducted himself during practices, games, and off-court interactions. I thought this year was one of his better jobs coaching with less talent and getting more out players than one to be part of the Bloomfield basketball team. I believe this was the guideline's correct area that was set out before Coach Neal led the board and the superintendent, and I believe he performed the change in all areas that were requested of him. I had been told that in his exit interview evaluation for this season, that he received glowing remarks from the administration and provided recommendations to renew this contract. This leads me to believe that if as an employee, you're given an improvement plan and you make those changes, you're receiving... That's a quick three minutes. Isn't it? So I got, there's a whole couple more paragraphs there, but the biggest thing is, you can listen to the community here, you ain't listening to these kids. That's who it's all about, it's the kids. Bottom line, you're all red, you're all good, this is what's his news. Best line in the movie, old player says, "I think we should vote again." That's my one.
All the favor. Thank you. And in the donations, I have a list here, our donations are distributed by the Mason Athletic Club by the class of nineteen eighty-eight. Keith, Mary Alice Davis, J.R. and Jared Davis, Alan, Alex and Jessica King, Sheila and Brian Bell, Bernard and Melvin Porter, Patricia and Keith Graves, Brenda Hughes, Emily Curtis and Betty Price, Connie Jackson, Tom and Susan Bowing, Nate and Amanda O'Leary, Joe and Debbie Pickersley. And then a donation and a member of Red Seven at the Masonic Grill basketball program by Keith Fuller, Kenny and Rosa Hetha. And then Helen, Helen Bowling and the O.S. and Debbie have made a donation. And then Helen, Helen Boeing, and Oden and Stephanie that made a donation to the NJROTC program. Metal Technologies that made a donation to the Riley Dance. And Heal Pet Care that made a donation to the Hill Mill School. Would you like to think all these donations for their donation and do I have a vote for you?
I make a vote.
I have a second. All the favor. All right, thank you. And then after this, the fundraiser for a meal, do I have a second? And I have a second. All the favor. Thank you. And other business and... Next one, presented, and then superintendent.
Just two quick things. One, another one, we talked about the eclipse and planning. I think we have an awesome community that plan a lot of great events and is really successful. We're hoping to thank our teachers for preparing learning materials for our students. So we take a commitment to educate the board and also, you know, our staff did a lot of work to make sure the building is gonna be secure. It just went really smoothly, but I just enjoy being a part of this community and all the communities. Also, just giving updates on, I've collected input from every staff member and we'll work through that as administrative. I just read the potential building, that's the plan of the considering building.
Any board member comment?
First of all, I'd like to offer my apologies to the senior staff. For our last night, we made a mention in our three-time helping conference that allowed students to... Although we encourage helping participants to have a name, I certainly won't hear names mentioned in our section beyond because of the policies that allow comments to be read aloud if they become personal. We recognize the need to protect our teachers from comments that often end while the manner becomes personal. We will take steps to ensure we're better prepared to be held. Again, I'd like to offer my apologies to Mr. Fox. I'd also like to thank our nurse, working at our office staff, and the Great County Health My Life for coming. I would like to thank all of the team, the staff, the research, the staff that's always been around in Children's Hospital. Special thanks to the Indian, Mrs. Burton, St. Todd, and that is the other staff, Alex, Monta Vale, Lillian Wade, and Maya Oberbrand. Mrs. Graff, Abby, all the other ones, all the people that helped fundraise for the community to help them.
Can you have a one comment besides?
These are meetings will be on May 31st, or May 30th. And on Monday, June 24th at 6:00 p.m. in the Middle East High School Media Center, and this meeting is adjourned.